Of our solid waste public hearing regarding proposed fee changes. So with that, turn it over to the Director of Solid Waste. So he can go through with us the proposed fee increases. And then I'm sure we'll have some board input and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Good morning. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Love our Director of Solid Waste for the record. So just for the public's information, the Board of Commissioners in Solid Waste, we've had several workshops in the past month or so and different proposals to just to come up with solid waste fee adjustments. So what I'm presenting today is what was decided to be presented for consideration of the Board. So I'll read through them. It's a few pages, so if you bear with me. Residential fees, solid waste fee is $194 up to three yards per day. The current rate is $20 per yard over three yards. That's not changed. The extra sticker, proposed rate is $194 per set. And with no sticker, it's $20 per yard. The CSC products, refrigeration refrigerators, $10 per unit, that stays the same. Large, commercial sized refrigerators freezer set is $30 per unit, which is the same as it was before, the same it is now. Tires, up to 22 inches, up to 22 inches. Current rate is four tires with no fee. The proposed rate is, four tires, four tires, no fee. Current rate without rims, $2. The current rate with rim is $5. The proposed is $5 each without a rim and $10 each with a rim. Additional tires is $10 without a rim and $20 with a rim, and that hasn't changed. Oversized tires.
Sorry, just Director, that was the large truck over 22 inch?
Additional, it said additional tires.
It broke across.
Oh, sorry, current, sorry, large truck tires, current rate, first two tires, no fee. Sorry, it split right at the bottom. So, and then, yeah, so.
Are the current rates change?
Current rates are the same.
Thank you.
Oversized tires, tractor, tractor, et cetera, current, current rate, first tire, no fee. Current rate without a rim is $50. Current rate with the rim is 125. That has not changed. Inert is the current rate is three yards per day, no fee. The proposed is $10 per yard, one yard minimum. Metal, current rate is three yards per day, no fee. Proposed is $10 per yard, one yard minimum. Wooden brush, current is three yards per day, no fee. Proposed rate is three yards per day, no fee. Construction demolition is current rate is three yards per day, no fee. Proposed rates, $20 per yard, one yard minimum. Animal carcasses, less than 100 pounds, no charge. Current and the proposed fee is 10. 100 pounds and over, the current rate's 10. The proposed rate is 20. CR television monitors, CRT television monitors, current rate is first, first, no fee. Additional televisions, current rate is $5. The proposed up to 32 inches, proposed rate is $15 each. Over 32 is $30 each. Commercial fees, current rate's $20 per yard, half yard minimum. Proposed rate is $20 per yard, one yard minimum. Commercial waste by weight, current rate's $130 per ton. And the, at seven cents per, per pound, proposed rate is no charge. No change, I'm sorry. Inert, current rates $10 per yard, half yard minimum. Proposed rates $10 per yard, one yard minimum. Metal is current rate is $10 per cubic yard, half yard minimum. Proposed rates $10 per yard, one yard minimum. Wooden brush, current rates $20 per yard, half yard minimum. The proposed rates $20, $20 per yard, one yard minimum. Construction demolition, current rate is $20 per yard with a half yard minimum. Proposed rate is $20 per yard, one yard minimum. Recycling cardboard, rate $20 per yard, half yard minimum. Proposed is $20 per yard, one yard minimum. CRT television monitors, current rate $10 each under 75 pounds. And $25 each over 75 pounds. The proposed is $15 each for up to 32 inches. And over 32 inches is $30 each. CFC is $30 each currently, and it goes down to $10 per each. So it's the same as residential. Large refrigeration units are $30 per unit, no change. Animal carcasses, proposed rate, no, no charge currently for less than 100 pounds. The proposed rate's 10. Over 100 pounds is 20. Tires, up to 22 inches, the current rate without a rim is five. With a rim, it's 10. Proposed is, without a rim, it's five. With a rim, it's 10. Large truck tires, without a rim, are 10. With a rim, it's 20. Proposed rate, without a rim, is 10. Proposed rate with a rim is 20. Oversized tractor tires are, without a rim, is 50. With a rim, is 125. And the proposed rate is the same. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to just offer a quick overview with regard to, from my perspective, why we've come forward with this proposal. So for those who haven't tracked along, we've had a number of public workshops between the Board and Solid Waste to discuss what the current rates are and why we would like to see changes made. The three main things from my perspective are that first, there was an issue with regard to actual cost, what it costs the county to dispose of and manage and process these different materials. And so what we asked Solid Waste to do is go back and look at what the actual costs are so the Board could consider that and make adjustments to the fees to try to come as close as possible to actual cost. If we don't do that, then what's happening is we're actually asking all of the other taxpayers in the county to subsidize the cost of waste processing when we're undercharging. And that really, in my opinion, would be an inappropriate thing to do. So the Board did ask the Department to go back and look at that and bring forward what they believe the actual cost to be as close as possible. We also had discrepancies between, once we knew actual cost, between residential fees and commercial fees, even though the cost of disposal is the same. And again, we thought that, from my perspective, we looked at that and said, that's an inequity. Why would we charge a different rate for someone if, if our cost is the same to dispose of and process that material? So then there's the third item in my mind, which is the one I probably had the most conversations with folks about, and that is the stickers. So we're not changing, not proposing to change, the annual fee per household. What we're proposing to change is to say, with that $194 annual fee, we each get two stickers. It's the asking for additional stickers for only $5 apiece, that's the proposed change. We're seeking to take that away, to say that if you want two additional stickers, you need to pay the full fee of $194 again, because there's been both abuse and neglect when it comes to the use of those stickers. We know the stickers are sold to people in other areas in order to produce a profit, so you can pay $5 and turn around and sell it for $100 or more. And that is, again, causing a burden on the rest of the taxpayers in the county. It's, it's causing the rest of the taxpayers to have to subsidize those who are abusing the system. In addition to that, we just need to ask people to be responsible with their stickers. If I receive two stickers, just like everyone else in their household, whether I choose to stick that to the windshield of my vehicle or keep it loose and bring it with me, because I use different vehicles at times and I actually do both personally, I'm responsible to maintain that sticker. And I've never had to get replacement stickers. And I think it's okay to ask people to be responsible with those stickers, because otherwise, we're trying to manage people's stories as to why they've lost them. And that's just not a position the county and the county staff should be in to try to address that issue. And so I think it's simply a matter of responsibility that we all have to accept. And if, if I make a mistake and I lose that sticker, then there's a cost that I have to bear. So that's my personal perspective on trying to summarize what I would say the majority of the conversations were, that played out during those public meetings when we were bringing forward these ideas to present as a proposal for changing the fees. So with that, let's see what the other Board members would like to offer different or additional opinions and perspectives about that. And then from there, we can go into public comment.
I think one of the big things was, a lot of people in Bonner County were dependent on our household sticker not increasing. And so one of the important things that we focused on was what is household garbage? Because, and when you look at, when you're looking at some of the things that we were dumping, we were paying additional fees for like tires, but that's not actually considered household garbage. And so there's a fee that outside of your $194 that actually we pay for, not just the delivery, but the disposal of a tire. And so one of the things we looked at was what is defined as household versus what is not household? And in order to not bring that, have that household sticker go up again, you have to actually start to segregate, kind of, we got to sort the garbage. And so I took some time to look at other refuse areas to see how are they defining that? And so did this Board to say, for example, like one of our, we had one where I, I brought forward that on some refuse areas, a couch is not considered just regular garbage. There's a flat fee for a couch in a lot of places where they say the bulky item, not because of what it is, but it takes up the space in the receptacle, which then means that that, it gets filled faster and then it has to be shipped out, to be dumped, to be brought back. And so in order to address that, the fee associated with a bulky item is put as, a couch can't just be dumped in a lot of areas. It's considered not part of regular household. And so even though we don't have a cost for like a couch dump here, the Board had a majority believe that, we'll get to that at another review. That doesn't change that, that, that has a different line in a lot of areas. And so what you really see here is trying to control the cost of household regular garbage, segregating it from garbage that actually has additional cost associated that flux so that we can control our household sticker, which is what Bonner County wanted done more than anything, was to not see that sticker price change. Because if we didn't segregate out the number of tires, the number of stickers, you were going to see that sticker go up. And then the fixed income person says, well, my sticker went from 170 to 196 and it keeps going up. But it keeps going up because I'm dumping tire after tire. I'm dumping things that have a cost that fluctuates each year, so you necessarily have to change that. And so hopefully, people see that, that's why you're seeing the tire parts change. It didn't just change arbitrarily. There was work put in to see how much does it cost for the tire to be discarded, which was who comes to pick up the tire? How does it get dumped? That's really what you're paying for. That's not a, there's no profit to the county from that cost. It's simply what does it cost to dump and not putting that cost inside your household sticker? Because it really isn't household. That's one part. I've gotten a lot of calls on the extra sticker idea. So what I want to give, one disclaimer was, the Board accepted that there is going to be times when someone, for example, might have an accident to their vehicle and their sticker was on it and it's been damaged. And so it accounted for, that person can call into Solid Waste and say, this is my issue. And they'll go through the process with Solid Waste to get that sticker for a nominal fee of $5. That person wasn't going to be penalized for an accident outside of their control. So we recognize that aspect of it. But in terms of the idea of up to eight or 10 stickers, consider that that's every sticker 200 bucks. And that's saying a full household's worth of garbage. So that is redistributing the cost across the county. And so hopefully, you hear that if you had an accident that made you lose a sticker, you're not being asked to pay that if it's a valid issue that you can show Solid Waste. But the idea that two full stickers is gone from the house, that was accounted for. The other issue that we did address was, there are some people where there's the accidental, it gets lost in the mail. When we're doing the time, right in that time when they get mailed out. And so there is that grace period of within your time. But if it becomes something that gets abused, the county's going to have to address it because everybody's paying. It really is a redistribution. And when you think of garbage, when you have to take your garbage, is why you have the sticker. But in terms of household garbage, if we were delivering just to your house and your box got filled, that's all you get. You're going to pay extra. We're trying to control it so that it addresses keeping that sticker as stable as we can and addressing that reasonably, we should have had a, a system that identified what are the costs that drive the increases that we saw? Because you already saw an increase, it wasn't last year, it was the year before, on the sticker went up to the 196. And that's what this is aimed at doing, with actually making, making it equitable, as Commissioner Donkey said, between residential and then commercial. There is a request, and, and Solid Waste is implementing this, is we don't do scales, but we need to measure correctly as best we can when people are coming in and needing to pay. Because if we don't do that, it's the same thing as redistributing it to residential taxpayers. We are looking at what are our options to address and sharing that it's not out of county garbage because we are in the panhandle. We have those constraints. But some of those issues make, it requires you to invest more money in the system because it's not cheap. But those issues are something that we're looking at to address in the area of southwest Bonner County. We all see it where it's, your license plate is not here, but you're dumping garbage here and you're paying to dump your garbage here. We know that we're trying to address that. But hopefully, people can see that it's a control of the cost and not holding one person responsible for somebody else's dumping when some of that dumping really should be borne by the person that's dumping. And if I'm going to choose to do my tires, not at a tire company, when I get new tires, if I just hand it all over to the county, it really is costing all of us more money. And we were trying to address that as well. So that's, that's my comment on it. I do thank and appreciate everybody that called me, because I got a lot of calls on this. But after hearing the explanation, a lot of people had a view of, I can understand that. One of the things that it's, it's within the Solid Waste is, they could raise it 4% every year and we don't, we don't do that. And this is a showing of, we are doing our best as a Board to address what were the cost drivers of solid waste and doing a fair equitable distribution without having to change that residential fee again. Because if you don't do this, what you're going to get is just an inflated number of a residential sticker for everybody. And that's what people said they didn't want to see us do. And the only way to accomplish that is to go line by line like you see here. And I'm saying all of that to hopefully curb some of people that didn't get that full explanation. They just saw the rate sheet change and felt like this is a lot of changing. The other thing is, there are, it's, you never know where, some of the things have businesses that were using it more as a, because you had a sticker, just dumping commercial garbage. And the only thing you can do to control that is to educate the community on, doing it that way makes a hardship on all of your people in the county. If it's commercial garbage, it shouldn't be used as a residential dump because it's, the residential is for residential, commercial garbage is different. But we unfortunately don't have the ability to control that. So it's, it's one of those on your honor types of dumping. But hopefully, businesses recognize that you'd be passing that cost on to just the average taxpayer. So those are my comments on that. But I, I did get a lot, I think the most, the most vocal were, people feel like we should have, that they should get more stickers without a cost. And we wanted to explain why it, that doesn't work. Because you could get, you have, and we brought up vacation rentals too, where they could get eight and 10 stickers. Those stickers can leave with your, the current system, if it was, you can have five stickers at just $5. That's, imagine that those stickers stay in that community that way. And how many vacation rentals do we have in Bonner County? See the leakage of your budget as a taxpayer if we didn't control the number of stickers. Even if you came here and that was your, an item you didn't like, that was also part of it. Because before this session, you will have been able to, you used to have, last year it was eight, but the year before, you could have 10 stickers. So you imagine 10 stickers in the community for every vacation rental, plus every residential. That's a lot of extra stickers. And that's what we were trying to curb. And I want to hit that home a lot, because that was primarily the complaint I dealt with, was the stickers. So.
Ditto. So I'd like to mention a couple of things, because it was brought up in some of my discussions with the citizens, that some people that own homes and property here also own rentals or whatever, Cootenay County. And they said that Cootenay County doesn't charge them anything. And it's like, no, that's not true. They don't charge for a sticker or anything like that, but they actually charge by the weight. The way you go in and the way you go out and charge you for how much trash you brought in. There's no place that I know of that you can take your trash and dump it for free. And I think actually here in Bonner County, I appreciate the fact that between the Board and the Solid Waste Department, they're working very hard to try and keep these costs down for the public and for the citizens. These price increases that you see on other items are actual costs that it take, costs the county to dispose of that, such as the tires, the inner trash. We're not raising fees on it to be making more money. We're raising the fees to cover the actual cost of disposing of it, which I don't know how anybody could argue the fact that we wouldn't want to collect those fees for the cost of that material. On the stickers, it's all about personal responsibility, I think. It is happening that people from out of state and out of our county are bringing their trash here and they're dumping it for free on their end. You and I, as taxpayers, get to cover that cost. Our disposal fees are based on weight that this county generates in a year. And all of that's calculated into this $194 disposal fee. If more people keep bringing in more trash and dumping it for free, and I call $5 a year, free, that is costing all of us money. Now, what I see possibly happening is if we can actually do something constructive here and curb that abuse to where the weight of our trash disposal actually is reduced, I see it a very likely possibility that we could reduce the price of these stickers. Because the price of these stickers reflect the price of getting rid of the county trash for the year. So I, to me, it seems like the right thing to do for the citizens of Bonner County that live here.
Does the Board have any additional comments before we move into public comment? Director, anything additional?
I have one question that posed to me. If a citizen wants to purchase just one sticker for $97, do they have the option to do that versus two, two stickers for the 194?
I don't think so.
My thought was no, because it's for the household and as a courtesy, we're giving people two. But household, and I liken this to looking at how garbage is typically done. Because you're two people in one house, doesn't give you two garbage cans. But we're giving you two stickers. And two garbage cans. you two stickers. And to garbage cans, it allows, consider the way in which we send our garbage. It's, you measure how much I can dump off based on my carload. But if I have two stickers, that's two different carloads, which really allows me to double it. But it's a courtesy to do it that way for people. But in traditional garbage, you don't get two dumpsters because there's two people. So my vote would be no on that.
I believe that's for a replacement sticker. Is that correct?
Well, yeah.
That was for a replacement, by a replacement for one for $94.
We've identified the cost of the household garbage at 194, which was not based on the number of occupants, it was household. And so it's a household sticker.
And to clarify, I don't, we can't, we can't know that it's a replacement sticker?
I get it.
You know what I'm saying? So we've already identified that, as Commissioner Blame said, if somebody has damage to their vehicle and it requires the whole vehicle's totaled or the windshield has to be replaced and the sticker is damaged, lost in that process, and they provide evidence, that's one situation where the $5.00 just to offset the cost of the actual sticker itself, but not the cost of us to dispose for household waste for a year.
I think you're always gonna have someone who has an event that's outside of the bell curve that makes a reasonable argument. But the majority of what we're talking about is inside that curve of how do you curb the garbage issue in the county. And I think it's not a county that's not going to hear the extenuating circumstance, because every last one of you has an opportunity to say, this is not what you guys talked about, but I want my issue to be heard by the Board of Commissioners and bring it forward. It's what we're trying to set is the guardrails to protect the household residential sticker. Because if we don't do that, it's going to go up. Because you imagine all of these costs, if we didn't change any of them, you would've saw an increase in your residential sticker fee for everybody. So what you saw was, do I give my tire to the county or do I give it to the tire company to dispose of it? You saw that more than anything, which is one of the biggest ones, and not an unlimited supply of stickers. But we're trying to protect everybody's residential sticker. And when you look at the county, that is equitable distribution without asking a household to take on the cost of somebody else. But I know there's gonna be outside the bell curve, but you always can come in this meeting on Tuesday and I want to be heard, I have an extenuating circumstance, and see if you can compel something different. But we're trying to set a guardrail here.
I would like to also add on the record that if you do have a vehicle that's in an accident that has a sticker on the windshield or you need to have the windshield replaced, that we are gonna ask for proof of that. We're really trying to cut down on the people abusing the system, and which makes it unfair for the rest of us. So it's on the record. It was talked about in the meeting that don't come to Solid Waste and say, my windshield got replaced and I want another sticker.
Without evidence, without evidence.
If everybody's vehicle gets hit all in the same year.
We all have chipped and cracked windshields, but if we have evidence that it had to be replaced, that's a different situation.
And I think that, and part of, point of pointing out what Commissioner Corn is saying is you want the community to understand that even if that's the case, if it becomes something that all of a sudden there's a spike and everybody's saying, I need the $5.00, it's going to be, you're gonna be right back here next year, because we need to control that cost. So it's not, it's not a penalty. It's trying to address the concern while equally saying, and not just curbing the people that abuse it, but controlling the cost to make good on the commitment to have that sticker not go up. And that's the way that we have to do it, is to not just say, because you said so, it's accurate, but saying, okay, put in your insurance claim, for lack of a better term, for why you want the $5.00 versus buying a whole new sticker.
Do you do me a favor and pass the sign-in sheet for the comment? Thank you. Okay, we'll move into public comment. First on the list, we have Laura. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
State your name and if you're a Bonner County resident or not.
My name is Laura Braniff. I am a Bonner County resident. I've worked for Bonner County for 11 years and four months and had boots on the ground, not only at Clark Fork, but multiple sites. Fees have come and gone, increased and decreased for different items many times. With regards to proposed fee increases, I'd like to begin with uncollected revenues. There are 21 churches and businesses in the Clark Fork Hope area that do not have dumpsters. This can easily be checked through waste management. There are also people who dwell in commercial properties, such as apartments, shop conversions, et cetera. I'm certain this is a countywide issue that other site attendants can verify. Last week alone, sorry, nervous, I saw approximately $540 of commercial garbage get dumped using a 2025 sticker. I know for a fact that all this garbage came from businesses. A 300% increase for no sticker from $5.00 to $20.00 will be nearly impossible to collect. People will dump trash elsewhere, such as the woods, in the river, outside gates at sites, et cetera. Patrons have already told me they will do this. Now the sticker changes. Clark Fork Hope has many seasonal residents. Some receive stickers out of county and do not bring them when they come here for the different seasons. They are happy to purchase extras for $5.00, but I'm sure we'll balk at paying 194 more dollars. Please reconsider this change. Myself, as a multiple property owner, can appreciate the importance of fees for use of the dump sites. It is a very fine service for Bonner County to provide for its residents. In my personal opinion, it is not a fair fee due to the fact that properties vary in size, such as square footage of the home. For instance, in Sanders County, Montana, homeowners are taxed based on the square footage of their home, which makes it a much more fair tax or fee. Whatever you do, or excuse me, whatever the commissioners, you, the commissioners decide to do to change or increase fees, I will try to collect and do my job as I'm instructed. But I cannot guarantee that I will collect, as I cannot pull money out of people's pockets if they refuse to pay. I also anticipate conflict and aggression and will not engage with patrons in that way. Once someone comes to me with aggressive attitude or words, I turn around and walk away. Thank you for your time and appreciation. I appreciate, or thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate all you do for the work for Bonner County.
So may I ask, so you're a site attendant at Clark Fork?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Thank you. My name is Carol Fertato. I live in Clark Fork, rural. We have two little RVs on our property. So we only go to the dump maybe twice, to Clark Fork, twice a month. Love the $5.00 fee, cost us $10.00. So if you charge, I understand about the tires and the other things, I really do. But, and I know that you're probably raising the $5.00 fee to discourage people that are abusing it from out of county. I get that. But a lot of people can't afford the 194 dollars a year, especially if we're only dumping twice, once or twice a month, we're not using it that much. So that's the only thing I would ask, is that you reconsider that and somehow deal with the abusers the other way. And like, you know, Laura said, that a lot of businesses use it and, I don't know, maybe have a different sticker for commercial or something, so that, you know, they use that. Or more education or something. But that's the only one I would ask, is that you don't, you know, increase the $5.00 fee, you know. It will affect a lot of rural residents, I think. We wouldn't dump anywhere else or do something like that, would just have to bite the bullet and pay the 194 dollars. But, I mean, I think the first year we moved here, we did pay the sticker fee, but then it increased so much and it was like, well, you know, $5.00, that's $120.00 versus almost $200.00. So, thank you very much.
Can I ask you to clip, we're gonna clarify the same thing, I think.
May I ask you what you do with your two stickers that you get in the mail?
We don't, because we're living in RVs, so it's not considered real property until you build a house, then they tax you with that. So we'd have to go and buy it extra.
So you can buy, you can buy the sticker outright, but you're saying that instead of doing that, you pay $5.00 a dump?
Right.
And you're opposed to it going to the $10.00?
The $20.00.
Yeah.
And then that will have to buy the, the two stickers for 194 dollars, right?
Correct. So doing the math real quick, and I'm not challenging you or anything, but you say you go to the dump twice a month, usually, roughly.
It's $120.00 a year.
Well, twice a month would be $10.00 a month, right?
Yes.
So it'd be $120.00. So what you can do, obviously, is you can go ahead and purchase that sticker for 194, like the rest of us do, and take your trash down to the Clark Fork site, like all the other residents. I'm trying to understand where the issue is, other than you're gonna have to pay an extra $70.00 roughly out of your pocket.
Right. And like, you know, she said that people already told her that they're gonna dump somewhere else or do something else that, you know, it's gonna be a detriment to our environment, you know. There's a lot of people in the Clark Fork area that can't afford the 194 dollars. And they don't, they don't go, I mean, if you went three times to the dump, then yes, the 194 dollars does pay for it. But if you're not dumping that much, it's not, I guess, the only reason you're increasing it is to deader.
No.
We're not increasing it.
There's actual cost.
It's actual cost.
The other thing you'll see in the proposed fees, if you don't have a sticker, is the proposed no sticker fee is changing from $5.00 for up to the first three yards to $20.00 a yard. Because $20.00 a yard is what it actually costs the county to dispose of it. And so that's why we're saying, if somebody doesn't want to have a sticker, then they're just gonna pay per yard. And if ultimately your amount of yards of waste that you dump per year turns out to be less than 194 dollars based on $20.00 a yard, then that's great to do that way. But the county has to start collecting the actual cost. Otherwise, everyone else is subsidizing that cost.
Not if I'm not using that much garbage.
Let me say it to you, say it to you this way. So first, I'll explain, I think I have a good way to explain to you. But first, I want to say thank you for explaining your issue, because it is a little bit different than a person that has the house built on it. So let's say it this way. The person who has the house built on it, the county takes the money from them by way of putting it through their taxes. They don't, they're not giving us a check for it. It's automatic. And so to say that everybody, since the county can just has an arm by which we can take the money from you, let their sticker costs go up to keep.
Oh, no, I don't want that.
So to address our prices, somebody, we either have to make it, adjust it based on what is being spent and put it in the right buckets. But if we don't do that and we say, the sticker, the daily charge is not going to increase based on what it costs us, we're going to push that, if we push that to the sticker for the resident people that have a home, the county can just scull back that money without asking the person, because we just put it on your bill. But that's not fair to the public, because we're saying, you need, you choose not to buy the sticker. So what, we can't do the fear of, somebody said they're going to throw their garbage in the dump if I don't pass that on to the homeowner who has a house built. Because that's in part what happens, is the 196 increase, it was like 170, what was it before we increased it?
185.
185.
Yes.
We increased it automatic. Those people didn't get to choose whether or not we voted. It got increased. If we don't put the money in the right bucket, and then we say, someone said they're gonna throw it in the garbage, that doesn't help the county out. I hear, I hear that people are saying that. But the reality is, is that isn't how it works to say, I'm going to threaten not to dump my garbage out.
Oh, I get that.
It's not, there's always gonna be, and that's where my comment about the bell curve is, there's always gonna be people outside the bell curve that are saying, I'm not going to do it. But that doesn't mean my job is to not do it the correct way and to say, if it costs the county $20.00 to dump what you want to dump, why shouldn't you have to pay the $20.00 versus your neighbor having to help subsidize your $20.00 cost?
Well, because if I'm paying $10.00 and I'm only dumping a few bags of garbage, is that paying for that?
No. So that's what this is reflecting. This is reflecting, you were getting a deal by not paying the full rate. And so what we did was, we reviewed, what does it cost us to dump it? And so if $20.00 is the right number, and that's what the county brought forward in workshop of, this is what it costs, if you don't pay the $20.00, the $20.00 still gets paid. It's just redistributed across the whole county. Versus saying, dump more garbage to justify your 196, or consolidate your garbage and do it your three yards for your one time, but not that your neighbor has to help subsidize your cost. I understand, and I think that Laura brought up a good argument of, is there an opportunity for there to be a commercial dumping sticker versus just a residential? I think that that's a reasonable thing to take a look at. I think there's even a look of, is there a compliance element of people that have businesses that don't, aren't registered with a commercial dumping? But for me, the answer isn't to say, people are going to not buy the stickers, because for the people that are in that group, they were all, we're not creating it. We're caused, we're requiring you not to tell your elderly lady on a fixed income who lives in a house who already has to pay the 196 because we jumped it, that she has to pay even more. That's what we're trying to control.
Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't know what you do in Bonner County. So when the garbage gets collected and, where's the, I know that you have the big facility over by Sagal, but where does the garbage go after that?
We have to transport our garbage out of this state. And so with fluctuating gas prices, we go, and that's part of what drives the cost depending on what of, which of these items. And so when I was talking about large items and we have to call for an item, one of the receptacles to be moved, those are costs associated. We transfer, our garbage goes out of state because we don't have an agreement with Cootenay and Boundary County, we can't dump in their landfill either. We are looking at a landfill option here, but we have to ship our garbage elsewhere.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does that, I know it's not the answer you want, but does that answer?
Not the answer I wanted, but I get it.
Yeah, we just want people to be well informed about the reasons why we're looking at the need for the change. And the, my perspective is, the unfortunate reality is, the county over, historically has created an expectation that we can't sustain. We've been undercharging and therefore requiring all of the other taxpayers to make up for that difference for years. And that's just been an inappropriate way to operate, in my opinion. And we're trying to correct the fact that we haven't charged appropriately for a really long time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Dave?
I'm Dave Kuzenza. I live in Blanchard. I almost moved to Clark Fork, though. I've been here seven plus years now. I appreciate what you guys have had to do, because, yeah, it's a lot more complicated than the average person would think of. And, but I had one question, just because the way it came out, and it's more for you, on tires, not that I really care about tires, but it says the current rate, first four tires for free, and I understand that, no fee. It doesn't say what the new proposed rate for the first four tires would be. So it gets a little confusing there. You have additional tires, current and proposed, but you don't have current rate for tires and a proposed.
So currently, the first four tires have no fee.
Right.
And then without, we're in there $2.00. So.
That's for additional tires.
Right.
So.
No, so go to your proposed line.
The proposed rate.
Proposed rate.
So you're getting rid of, so basically you should say for up to 22-inch, current rate, first tires, no fee, and then you say proposed, there is a change. See, because that's the format you put down, all the way down. And when you got there, I go, wait a minute, there's no proposed rate.
It's the only thing that doesn't have proposed after current.
Okay.
So it was confusing. So you're saying, the new proposed rate will be $5.00 each period?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right. The formatting's different.
I noticed that on like two or three different lines. It was like, well, maybe. Yeah, it just, that confused me. Not that I care about tires. The, I'm here with stickers like everybody else, partly because of my wife. We have our household, my son, my wife and me, and he works, he's an electrician, so he gets up and goes all the time. We buy one extra sticker for $5.00, because we don't know who's gonna pass by the dump when we need to dump. Usually, it's like once a week. So my wife has one in her car, I have one in my car, and he has one in his car. And it's just who's there. Now, Brian, if I'm correct, you said you could put that sticker like maybe just on a card and carry it with you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and so, yeah, just grab your card when you're going to the dump, I guess, that would probably work it. The problem is when you stick it on a window.
Correct.
I had this recently, because I did have to change my chipped window, but I took a razor blade and I scraped it off.
I did the same thing.
You can mail it back to us and say, here's my sticker, I just need a new one.
Right, and they gave me a new one because I actually had.
They're gonna start scraping stickers off windshield.
Go to your local pull-up park and look for stickers.
Yeah, if I come out to my car one day and my sticker's ripped off, I'm gonna be mad.
Sticker band-aid.
You know, it's, it, it's a tough nut to crack, I get that.
It's the convenience of it too.
And there's not a perfect solution, absolutely. We are looking for ways to improve in the future with the point-of-sale system or other, other means of tracking, but it takes time and cost.
The only thing I can come up with is, I know um, when I first came here, I didn't have my house because we were building, but I bought the stickers, but I needed three, again, um, because we were just sort of living out of a shop at the point. But while the house was being built, the um, they checked, when I got my sticker, uh, where's your residence location and your car and license plate, and they made sure my car was Idaho and registered to me. And my sticker goes on there. Now, I, I understand, I guess I could have given it or sold that to somebody else, but shouldn't they be checking every car coming in? Why is it not checking this, oh, you're not from Idaho, I mean, do they check closer? Because I, I'm just sort of curious, they had to go through, I couldn't get my sticker for a few days, but they had to verify what DMV and everything else, which is fine. Isn't there some way to, oh, wait, you're not even from Idaho and look a little closer?
They verify for your, for your piece of property in Bonner County.
Property and DMV, yes.
But, but where you're, what you're looking for, we're not contacting the DMV to confirm who you are, because that, that's not. You can be an out-of-state person owning property in Bonner County and buy those, those stickers. What you're, what you're asking for is that we look at a little bit closer since we come to the DMV, and so you and I are in the same spot, so we go Idaho Hills or we go, depending on whether you're turning left or right on 41.
Yeah.
But the reality comes to it is, we don't have the technology to say, that vehicle is here, we've, we've looked at, you know, do you do a scanner to where it's scanning the vehicle? But the reality is, is we're not there yet, but we're thinking of a process. I think when you talk about wanting three stickers for, depending on who's gonna go past the dump, it's not unreasonable desire, but do we wage the convenience of it versus the money aspect? And I think most people want, I want the convenience of being able to tell whoever's driving past the dump to take the garbage. But I, to do that, I do the same thing as Commissioner Donkey's, my sticker is on the two most likely, but with one of them is on a um, little three-by-five card that I can pull out of that vehicle and put in a different vehicle if I'm gonna drive something else.
Well, I hadn't thought about that, because I wasn't sure if you could do that, but I mean, that's a great idea.
You don't, you don't have to, they, sticking it on the windshield visible is for them to be able to see where it is. There, because even at that, it's not a perfect system, because I can hand my card out to someone else, we don't want people to do that, but it's, we, each sticker represents a household's garbage.
No, I totally understand all that and I appreciate that. I guess my only comment there would be this, because the way the stickers are made, when you peel them off, they're made to be put on a window, you put it on a card, you can't read it.
Tape it on there.
You can read, you can read it on the, on a, you can read it on a card. They're just looking for the Bonner County and the, the year on there, they can see it.
Okay, well, as long as we can put it on a card, I think we could make it work, and my son would go to dump two often, he'd tend to need to do it.
A lot of semantics, right, I use, I literally use a binder clip, paper binder clip, because it's heavy, so it won't blow out the window if I have the windows open, it sits on my dash, and when I get there, I hand it out the window.
It's a Christmas gift to your son, he doesn't have to take the garbage anymore, how's that?
And no, he has to do it, he's, he's keep a little, come on.
Right.
And like you say, I appreciate all your work and, and thank you for explaining beforehand, because that, that got rid of a lot of it, other than my one proposal mine.
Yeah.
And that's just a typo thing, somebody will just over, and uh, yeah, and I'll start putting one of my stickers on a card, I guess. Usually it's me who goes to dump, every now and then I get my wife to do it too.
Stop with the dump, I'm gonna get out of town.
Alright.
I'm trying to save gas, right? I go there too often.
Thank you.
And, is it Terry?
It is, but I thought it was just to sign in for the meeting.
Oh, okay. Would you like to speak?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yeah, is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Okay, then we'll go to online, Susan Martin.
That might be Wayne, just guessing Wayne, actually.
Wayne Martin, for the record.
Told you.
Win $5 Asia.
Yep.
If I have it, I'll bring it to you tomorrow.
Marley.
Wayne Martin, for the record.
That you're bringing me money.
Wayne Martin, for the record, uh, Bonner County resident, uh, a few things. The increased growth in this county doesn't, does generate an increased cost to the county because of the amount of waste that is generated with the increased homes. Staffing to, to watch, monitor what's being dumped is going to be a cost, and it is dependent upon the county resident uh, to be honest. And not pass out stickers to every and, and anyone that's out there uh, making a profit by selling a $5 sticker, $200 to somebody out of the area. My opinion is the management of the stickers for those that have vacation homes, rental homes, uh, needs to be taken uh, by that property owner or the person renting the property. Uh, whether it's, they have a sticker there on a card for a renter to be able to utilize, and when they, they finish their two weeks vacationing, that card has to be there. Whether they increase the cost of the rental to cover the cost of a new sticker, if they take it with them, or however that might be. The idea of generating the, the cost based upon the size of the home is a great, wonderful idea. But you, you buy or build a home, you have a family, and that home is designed for X number of people. But as the kids grow up and they start moving out, you now are generating less trash and all. So if you're going to do that, you need, really need to look at the number of people that live in that home or on that property. And I know people that have kids that are moving out, uh, and, and to consider the cost of the size home being the only factor, to try to sell that home and then try to find a smaller home, so that you base it upon that, can be a nightmare. And it's a burden. The cost to seniors needs to be considered, and I'm sure that you have. There are times that the neighbor and I will be headed to the dump, and either he will take my trash or I will take his trash, uh, because of the cost of fuel, uh, the convenience to have it out of the house. But there can also be things, but health issues that are happening in the home. I do want, want again though, uh, staffing to monitor if, if they're going to have to be out there looking in the back of my pickup or somebody else's pickup or somebody else's trailer. There is the potential that you're going to end up having to increase, you know, the staffing for that. Uh, that person does, I'm sorry, have to use the restroom occasionally, uh, which means that they won't be at the gate to monitor. And so, you know, at, at what point? And it was said earlier, and I was happy to hear that, there is no perfect solution for everyone. And so unfortunately, everybody's going to have to tighten their belts and, and accept that fact. And let's hope that the people of, you know, Bonner County have enough respect for this county, that they're not going to take their trash and go dumping it out the window, uh, or finding someplace in the forest and all to get rid of it or onto somebody else's property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne, on that comment about measuring, if, when you consider what household garbage, when you have it picked up, you actually are paying for the size of the container that you get, whether or not you put anything in it or not. And I understand the idea of saying like the size of the house or the number of people, I understand where that's coming from, but in practicality, that, it's not, that's not how it works. They're looking at, you buy it, and in this case, that's essentially what we've done, is we've looked at, what is the dollar amount of the sticker based on what your guaranteed amount, which is three yards per day, uh, seven days a week, you know, for the full month? That's really what you're doing. And so to ask the county is essentially, it's going to cost you more with some of those solutions, because then it means more staffing to manage that versus saying, this is the dollar amount you get based on the household. And as, and it's, it's just the most reasonable way, and in part, when you're talking about like the outside of the bell curve, people that have difficulties of getting their garbage, we're talking about county versus city where you have city services, where they come and pick up the garbage. And, and there is a difference, and that's a, those are personal decisions, but from a county perspective, we're trying to manage what is reasonable for the county to institute us charges in order to control that cost. Because anything greater that includes us adding more personnel, uh, is gonna drive the cost of that sticker up, which is what we're trying not to do.
I understand that, and the only reason I brought up the fact of the house is because the young lady that spoke earlier, uh, that watches, uh, works at one of the dump locations, mentioned about size of the home. Otherwise, I would not have mentioned that, that, that that would be something to consider.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to mention as well, it made me realize, one of the things we talked about, and this is not an everyday item necessarily, but like TVs and monitors, for example, um, it used to be by weight, and we're talking about some of these being hundreds of pounds, the large ones, and it's not feasible or reasonable to ask a site attendant to try to weigh and understand the weight of a unit. And that's why we took averages to say, if it's, you know, a 32-inch or smaller, we know it's within a certain weight range, and therefore this fee is reasonable, and if it's over that size, so something that can be easily checked with a tape measure at the, you know, on the vehicle, on the trailer, versus having to figure out and estimate a weight. So we, we wanted to come up with solutions that were both accurate to cost as well as reasonable as much as we possibly can for the site attendants and not have to go through extra efforts. And with that, I just want to say personally also that I appreciate what the site attendants are doing, I appreciate the fact that change will create consternation and frustration with some of our residents. And that, that situation is something that is frustrating, and I'm sorry for the fact that it's likely that there will be people that will express their frustration to site attendants, um, instead of to me as a member of the board, as a decision-maker. And I um, request and invite people who are frustrated to express their frustrations to me and not to our site attendants, because they shouldn't be bearing the burden of that. So I just, I will apologize in advance for any site attendants who are um, having to deal with some of that potential outcome, if the board chooses to move forward with this proposal. But I, I still firmly believe, based on all the input we've received, and I do appreciate people's feedback and comments and ideas, and we should continue, in my opinion, as a board, to be looking for better solutions in the future as they become available to us. But I do also think it's necessary that, that a change be made to try to more accurately and consistently reflect the cost to each person and not ask others to bear my cost or your cost if I'm not falling within the proper guidelines. Or if we've simply been mischarging in the past, which we have in some categories. So again, I just, if people are concerned, frustrated, have questions, I invite them to contact the board, to contact me individually, I'm happy to have those conversations. Um, I would love to help be a shield and help deflect as many of those comments and concerns as people have away from our site attendants and to me as a decision-maker.
I think uh, one way that we could probably do that is if you want to stop by the office before you take off, I'll give you a box of Commissioner Donkey's cards. Yes, you, and you can give those to the people that come up, are disgruntled.
Currently, I give Melissa and Bob's cards.
I wanted to address what Laura said, but first say thank you, because sometimes as staff members, it can feel a little bit trepidatious to come before and give comments about something like this. So I appreciate that you're willing to come forward and state your, your concerns and your comments and your suggestions, so I applaud you for that. Um, and encourage you, because some of the things you brought forward as to the gaps of where service could be um, addressed, um, to address some of that leakage out of the solid waste budget, I think are things that Solid Waste should be working on, um, and as you see those things, so I appreciate that. I want to be clear for staff, at no time is, are you expected to engage with any disgruntled person. And so that's not an expectation, but I think that this is an example also of where, how you roll out a change that will be met with people that are not happy with the change can happen more smoothly. And in some of that, I will tell you, having visited multiple sites, and you and I had a conversation before, is how do you give the talking points of why this change is? Because I've gone through the same spiel for the last few weeks, and when I'm talking to the individual person that originally called to yell at me for the proposed fee change, they ended in saying, I understand it now. And I think that maybe there is, and I'm gonna use this, when I was in high school, I was a telemarketer, and so you got that sheet of what you say.
Your script.
Your script, and maybe Solid Waste can make a script that kind of explains to the person, this is why, um, because I still had people that didn't like it. But I didn't have people that ended the call with the um, irritation. And I think that that comes from how do you explain something to them in a way that equally removes that, this is what they told me to tell you, which is what a site attendant gets to do, to put the onus back on the decision-maker. But explains it in such a way that is the perspective of, this is controlling the cost that you agree right now by this conversation that you don't want to see go up. And maybe there's an opportunity for Solid Waste to do that with its site attendants, so that it can be rolled out more smoothly with the contact for the, for complaints and concerns, reach out to these people. I'm not these people, I am just the person told to tell you to call these people, that might be beneficial. I think um, there are other site attendants that you have that actually had ideas of other leakage that they see um, in the solid waste world. But when, I know I frequent my, the Blanchard area once more, and I had explained to you that, more of the conversation about, that we just had here, being told to the individual people, was met with, I don't like that those things are going to change, and I like the convenience of the $5 card, but I understand why we need to change was met. And I think maybe a, a script of sorts might be beneficial to help uh, arm the site attendants with good information of how the, this, because they're hearing it in passing a little bit, this is just the rate sheet. Because, and I think your whole department, you don't have to like the changes, but as a whole, the department needs to be communicating in the same direction of the change, so that the leadership minimizes the negative impact to the site attendant who has to interface with the public, who's now told, you may not have been paying attention, but it went from $5 to $20, and this is why. Because there is, that is going to exist, and if we can deflect some of that and maybe have like a, a transitions phase of, do we have data on which sites have more of the pay-as-you-go version versus the person who just bought the sticker? And maybe that's an opportunity for management to be out there as we go for the first couple of days to help ease that transition in, and maybe that would be beneficial. I'm not saying do that, I'm saying maybe think of if there's particular sites that are like that more than anything, might be worth doing, but I, I appreciate your comments.
Same thing on a press release and public outreach, we'll do that ongoing between now and.
And maybe asking staff of other ideas of leakage that they see, because I, um, I think the commercial business stickers is something that we are lacking.
Thank you.
I have a question on what that sheet is for, um, the property tax reduction. That's the treasures, so it's um.
They get a reduction.
What is it called? It's a.
It used to be, it used to be circuit breaker.
Yeah, circuit breaker.
Now, now it's property tax deduction. They have to do an application, people have to do applications and they get property tax.
Based on their financial situation. But it's not, what does that have to do? But it's not, what does that have to do with solid waste?
It's the sticker.
Understood. If they qualify for a property tax reduction, they can also qualify, right? So if we have folks that have that situation, it'll help make it more affordable.
Okay.
So in your, if this is, if you, our monthly income is here, then this is what it's reduced by, and this is just showing you the percentage reduction.
Yeah.
Okay. One more thing. I think it might be beneficial, Director, if you could just give a brief overview to the public, what happens to my bag of trash when I drop it off and throw it in the bin at Clark Fork? What happens to my trash?
It'll go into an eight yard container. Once the eight yard container is full, the site attendant will call Waste Management. When there is, they're like 80% full, Waste Management will go out there. When most of the containers are full, they'll load their truck, they'll take it to Colburn where the transfer station is, they dump it on the, on the tipping floor. And it'll get loaded into a long haul truck where it'll be transported to Adams County, Washington, which is over near Ritzville, and, and put in the landfill there. So it's, it's quite a process and it's a lot of fuel, there's a lot of moving parts to get our trash to its destination.
Thank you.
I think also that's a good segue to wanting to make sure that people understand a little bit more of the inner workings, because we also have that one where we were having, now I'm going to forget the name of it, where we've gone back and forth of, do you leave it open or do you close it because of the mattresses?
Oh, Lakeview?
Lakeview. It's, we don't want to ask people in, for example, Clark Fork to drive farther, just drive your own garbage to Colburn. And so you're trying to make things convenient also for residents. But with that comes needing to charge for what it costs to do things. Because if you don't, your option then could potentially be, you don't have that option there, you must drive it a little bit farther because it's too far out of that footprint. And that's part of what you're seeing is trying to accurately address those things. And I'll give a public service announcement on the Lakeview one is, that one comes up because we have people dumping things just out there. So you've got from mattresses and just leaving it on the ground. It's not, it's not a site that's manned. So do you leave it there as an option for people to dump garbage in? Or do you, knowing that people continue to throw garbage on the ground when that's not what it's there for? Or do you close it all together and say, now nobody can dump there even though some people are doing it wrong? And that's what we don't want to do, but we can't ask staff to go pick up mattresses off the ground and put them in receptacles for people. You've got a lot of issues and moving parts with that. And so this is an opportunity to give a public service announcement of, that's why that sign says, leave it in the condition that you found it in. Well, on Lakeview, we need you to leave it in, in better condition than you found it in, because the garbage, that is a question that came up this last go around. And I think this cycle, you're going to hear an answer of, does that site need to close because it's an unmanned site and it is getting, it's not being respected with people putting the garbage in the receptacles and we are not, that's, it's, it's a county system and it's not ideal, but we're trying to be considerate of the people that live there that would rather have a closer place to dump. But if you can't put the garbage in the garbage can, should we still have that site? And there's a question mark on that location because of those reasons. Because we've said it, I think it's been now four years in a row that that site is a problem because it's unmanned and it's getting trashed by the public.
Can be a wintertime workshop project.
Design when most people.
Commissioners, have any additional comments?
I don't.
I have one thing. So the resolution was submitted late, so it wasn't approved by Nate, but Nate is online. If he can approve the resolution, that would be fantastic. If, if not, we can, you can vote to approve the fees, but then we have to vote on the resolution on Tuesday next week. So if Nate's online and he can hear us, maybe, our legal. Maybe he's not online listening.
So, so I'm going to give a disclaimer for Legals since he stayed muted. So the request of the prosecutor's office is that we give them their information a minimum of a week to two weeks in advance.
That was our fault.
No, I understand that. And so if he didn't receive it in that amount of time, it makes it difficult to put him on the spot to say, in this meeting, approve that resolution. So I'm going to pretend that he's sitting there saying, thank you for doing that. And now he's ready.
I was trying to get unmuted. Yeah, so, so I am taking a look at that. Unfortunately, it takes me a little bit longer than it does Bill. But, and I do appreciate Commissioner Williams stepping in and discussing that. But yeah, I'm, I'm pretty close to that, but I have not been able to get through that yet.
So we'll plan for next Tuesday's business meeting, sending Legals in to review.
Veronica said you can approve the fees today, but then just follow up with the resolution next Tuesday, but that's up to you as a board. Your choice.
When you're to do it all at once.
I was just texting her back and forth while I'm up here, so.
You're looking at me, but he's the chair now, so you have to, you have to make eye contact that way.
So what would be the point of voting and approving the fees and not the resolution?
The resolution has to be passed. Start out options from Veronica.
And I'm just asking what would be the point of it. So if it's not something that doesn't have to be done because it has to be implemented by Friday or something, then it would probably be this, I think, to just wrap it all up into one package.
Perfect.
I agree. I think that would be cleaner. Commissioner Williams, did you have anything else on that topic?
I can see it both ways. I can see this is cementing that these are, this is going to be the change and it's no longer open for continued discussion and it's the technicality of the resolution. And I think that's what Bill is, or sorry, Bob is thinking of the reason to approve the fees themselves so that they can start a process by which to develop rolling out the fees. That, that's a reason to approve the fee change and then adopt it by resolution after that so that they can develop a system. That, that's my thought on it, but if the.
So you'd like to start the industry.
We have to start ordering, we have to, we have to put together the letter and the notifications to send to our, so we can get it out with all the.
Because there's a, they have to draw up information for it. And so if we didn't vote to do it, then they would be waiting another week to get that process. So.
We'd appreciate it.
And it was noticed as an action.
Yes.
So before the board considers making a motion, is there additional public comment? And if so, please step up to the microphone, state your name and residency again.
Dave Kazenza from Blanchard again.
Thank you.
Okay, for the record. No, I would say, you can't really approve this because there's still a couple lines that need, I think, need to be clarified. Because if you leave anything, you know, iffy, then you're going to have problems down the road, such as the one I brought up. I noticed the other ones on the, on the TVs and CRTs and those just need to be.
We can approve it.
On the resolution, it doesn't have the current date, it has all the rates.
So to be clear, Dave, the changes in terms of the dollar amount, though, this is their write-up of their explanation for this workshop, but the board approval is clear as to what we asked for. And so there won't, where there's not going to be disagreement between the two or any ambiguity.
Okay, well, that's, I'm just looking at the ambiguity.
Nope, there will be no ambiguity.
As long as that gets corrected, you're good. And a tiny comment, because I didn't bring it up before. When I bought my property, the person who had it before obviously didn't have a requirement to buy a sticker. And so they didn't. And I bought my property and it was basically a dump yard. It was a junkyard. I had, I had to ship out three and a half tons of steel and I took it to the recycler at San Point. I had to rent two 40 cubic yard dumpsters to fill it. And just as a comment, my neighbor's like, what are you doing? Why are you hauling this away? Why don't you just burn it all? I said, I don't want it on my property. You know, I mean, I wanted it gone. But the mentality of a lot of people is, and I know you looked at it, they will dump it on the side of the roads. You'll see furniture, you'll see TVs, you'll see that stuff because a lot of people won't pay those fees.
Those people might not be paying it now. I think that one of, one of the things I think is worth maybe doing an education piece on is, a lot of people don't know that when it is bare land that you can buy the sticker. I think that, I think that might be a difference too of maybe letting property, like how do we get that message out? Because sometimes that can be the case.
But people who are going to do it wrong are going to do it wrong. Or people who from out of state are going to do it wrong. Vacation homes, I understand, and yeah, they should pay their fair share while they're here. You know, so they have the option. They can pay individually or they can just buy a sticker. I mean, I get all that. But you will, I have a feeling to see more roadside stuff and vacant lot stuff being dumped. It's going to happen. Because it happens a lot in Washington because they do charge more. And that's why, I can see why Newport wants to come over to Blanchard. I can see that.
License plate.
It's unfortunate that we have some people that don't embrace the beauty of Bonner County, don't respect our other, others' properties and everything else, that we seem to be getting that mentality, such as Dave said, coming from out of state. It's unfortunate. And I just don't know how to deal with that. But there's bad apples everywhere. And with everything else, we don't want to punish all the good people for a couple of bad people out there. Hopefully with all the, the cell phones these days that all have cameras and everybody's got dash cams and stuff, it'd be great to be able to prosecute people that do that kind of stuff. And I prosecute them to the fullest extent. We've got to make a stance there, so.
I think when his comment made me think of something else, I think when you're thinking of the person that has the RV on the vacant land, I think that that's a, I understand what the lady was talking about, but then maybe there's an argument for the county needs to address those types of properties versus being different than just vacant land and doing stickers versus the just not having a house. Because a lot of people live in RVs long-term on a land and they don't have it. And maybe that goes into the comment of, is there leakage through that aspect of it? But I know that people say, I'm going to see more garbage, but I don't know that I'm, the person that, the real spot that you might see an increase is, like the lady said, from the $5 to the 20. But that person, we can, when you're talking about the, I live in an RV on vacant land and I might not want to pay 20 for my five, then maybe that's where we take a look at that. But you're still getting, for the most part, the same number of residential house stickers. You're seeing just a shift of the other items prices change. And so the guy that was going to throw garbage on the side of the road, maybe it's, we need a litter ordinance in the county and it's an enforcement opportunity. And you address it in that way, but not that you say, we're not going to change this because somebody is going to do it wrong. Because we would never make progress if we allowed those who do it wrong to dictate good decision making. And hopefully at the end of this meeting, people say, I may not like it, but I can see that it's moving based off of a good platform and we're trying to mitigate the things that people brought forward that could potentially be negative, whether that's from staffing or communities as much as possible, and that there's an open dialogue and welcomeness of that discussion so that we can do what we're, we agreed to do, which was to try to control our residential refuse fee.
Why don't Commissioners like to make a motion?
Don't look this way.
Okay. I move to approve the proposed fee changes to take effect 12-1-2025 for Bonner County solid waste, as indicated in our spreadsheet. I guess I'll say it that way.
I will second.
To make sure I got yours.
All right. There's a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment on the motion? Mr. or Mrs. Martin?
It's never Susan.
Seldom Susan. Wayne Martin for the record.
Never Susan.
Bonner County resident, I agree with what you are doing. One piece of information I didn't get to say, and I forgot to, I still think that developers need to, there needs to be a development fee for developers to help cover the cost with the increase of property and what occurs, that it couldn't just all fall on the residents and the new home buyers. But I do agree with what you guys are moving forward with. It has always been a positive thing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on the motion?
On the motion? That was almost like an echo.
Any deliberation by the board? I have none. We'll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you to all of the solid waste staff.
I will take some of those business cards.
I'll get them for you.
223.